This conference will now be recorded.
In attendance tonight, we have Thomas Vitale, Board Chairman, Robert Avery, Board Member, Carl Bonamico, Board Member, Shelby Jackson, Town Assessor, Kevin Coombs, Chief Appraiser, and Shelley Hemingway, Recording Secretary. Going to do the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of minutes. We had minutes from the last meeting that were attached to approve. Do I hear a motion concerning those minutes?
Make a motion to approve prior minutes?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And again, there's minutes attached today for the March 17th meeting. So please review them next week. You know, we'd like to make sure we get all the minutes approved before we wrap up the meetings. Okay, Consent Agenda. I didn't see that in here, is that?
Yes, it is in there, Mr. Chairman. Should be.
Yes, it is.
I have a copy in front of me.
Page 12, Board Members of the Agenda is the Consent Agenda. And there's two pages. And the assessor's office has worked with these people on correcting any issues and approving. So do I hear something from the Board concerning this Consent Agenda?
Make a motion to consent Agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Right.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so the Consent Agenda, just a reminder, this is mostly clerical errors and corrections. So it's not like we're not, you know, trying to resolve evaluation dispute with someone. It's a cler- it's more in the way of a technical or a clerical correction. And we just want to pass it through the Board while the Board is still in session. You'll note that you approved the Consent Agenda that's actually going to add over a million dollars to the grand list. We added one very large account that filed late and actually increased their assessment by over a million dollars.
Okay. Okay, so we're now at Item 6, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Attached Appeals. We're going to be starting this evening with Hearing Number 2020-151. Carriati Developers Incorporated. And we have Mr. Thomas Thompson representing Carriati Developers. We do have paperwork in here that authorizes you to represent them. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I saw it somewhere in all the paperwork. Okay, so we're going to start with 2020-151. And it's my understanding that you and Mr. Jackson have worked together on these appeals?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so let's start with 2020-151. This is personal property filing. I understand it was not filed, is that correct?
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Shelby. What we had done, we had had conducted a personal property audit of this account, a three-year look back. And at that point, the taxpayer was noncompliant. So we estimated what we thought the increase should be. We issued those tax bills, those tax bills have been, my understanding is that they've been paid. Now, the client is coming forward, he has a new certified public accountant. He's coming forward and he wants to redo the audit. In addition to the audit, we adjusted the 2020 grand list to reflect the estimates that we had made, you know, through the audit process. So when talking to Mr. Thompson, and I'll turn it over to him in just a minute here to, you know, confirm or deny what I'm saying, you know, after talking with Mr. Thompson, I indicated that we were not willing to redo the audit, the three-year look back. But what we are willing to do is if if they would supply the proper financial records through their accountant, that we would agree to conduct a one-year audit for the 2020 grand list and we would adjust that accordingly based on their actual records. And Mr. Thompson can add to that if he likes.
No, that's correct, Shelby.
So I guess we're, it's kind of a I'm trying to figure out how to make that in the form of a motion, I think. Let me think about this. Because if we withdraw this appeal, then that still leaves the other three audited years left hanging out there. So I think there should be a motion to the effect that personal property audit completed with, just bear with me, Mr. Chairman, if you would.
No problem.
Perhaps a motion to the effect that for the prior audit that was conducted, no change. However, we're willing to conduct, the town will the town will conduct an audit for the 2020 grand list, subject to submission of the financial records of the taxpayer. Is that too long?
Not too long. I don't, I make sure that we repeat that.
So we want to be clear that the prior three-year audit that was done, no change to those figures. However, for the 2020 grand list, that is now subject to an audit.
Correct.
Is that better?
Mr. Bonamico, I'm going to hand that to you.
So I make a motion that for the prior three-year audit, there will be no change?
Second.
Okay, but wait a minute, there's a second part.
And however, we will be holding an audit for the 2020 grand list.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. All right, so that's so that's 2020-151. Now, does that apply to the remainder of these, or is each one now a separate discussion appeal?
Let me see here. There's a series of trucks. I think they're all separate. They are all separate. What happened was, last year, Kevin went out and did, you know, extensive review, took photographs and everything else. We reduced the value from the book value based upon condition. This year, for some reason, they got increased again. And so we're recommending to the Board on all of these vehicles to just put them back to where they were last year. And Mr. Thompson has submitted photographs, I don't know if you've got a chance to look at them?
I have, I have.
These trucks, many of them have, you know, extensive rust and all kinds of damage and they're just some of them are not roadworthy, they're used for parts.
They were never bought brand new, these were used vehicles bought in 2013 and 2014. So even the cost of them is around, it ranges from $3,900 to $4,000. And that was several years ago. And you can see the condition.
I think we jumped, I think we jumped ahead to the truck list because 2020-152. Okay. I'm not sure, it has to do with we use our plate for repair? Is
Oh yes, you're correct.
So this one, I, you know, again, this is
I'm sorry about that. Yeah, I apologize, yeah, I apologize. So 2020-152 has to do with dealer plates that are being assessed, I'll let Kevin address that, he directly handles that more than I do.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Rhonda picked up this new personal property account. There was a dealer plate on a brand-new truck, a duly truck, I believe it was Ford. And it had Carriati written all over it. So we picked this, I believe Rhonda picked this up from a dealer plate list that we receive every year from DMV. I don't believe that Mr. Carriati or his business responded or filed a proper declaration to declare that vehicle.
So are we talking about the vehicle, we're talking about the plates?
Or any, whatever business entity that name was in, we didn't get a response. Rhonda sent them, set up a new personal property account for the 2020 grand list. And he either didn't file or filed late, or
Okay, and he's appealing he's appealing it, placing a market value of $1,500. I'm not sure on what. I see the town has six dealer plates. And they have a personal property assessment of Appellant's estimate of market value is zero.
Did the appellant file a property, personal property account with the appeal?
Well, let me jump in, because we just voted, the Board just voted to conduct an audit for the 2020 personal property account, so this would be a separate issue. You can either assess those plates at the current assessed value of 3738 or some other value as the Board may determine.
It's a different entity, Shelby, though.
Okay. So it's a different entity, it's Carriati Truck and Equipment LLC?
Correct.
All right, well, then approach it that way, that's fine.
Okay, so so it's a different entity, Mr. Thompson isn't necessarily the representative. Correct?
I'm representing Carriati Truck and Equipment.
And Carriati.
I don't believe that
And Carriati Development?
And, yeah, but they didn't file, they didn't file the proper paperwork to have the appeal. They didn't file tax returns for Carriati Development.
Okay, so
So those those appeals probably should be withdrawn from the developers.
Well, no, this one is filed by Carriati Truck and Equipment.
Okay, that's the one I'm really here for.
Okay, well, I, so go ahead, I mean, I, you know, if you're here for that, the Thompson's position is, you know, $37,380.
Yeah, that's from, are you looking at my spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay, so this is getting very confusing, I'm sorry, this is getting very confusing. The spreadsheet, Mr. Thompson is going to refer to the Carriati Developers account, which are several motor vehicles. We're talking about Carriati Truck and Equipment for those dealer plates.
Yeah, that's the dealer plates, right.
Right, so let me go back to Case 151. Case 151, we, the Board voted to do an audit for Carriati Developers, Inc.
Correct.
So that audit would not include registered motor vehicles?
Or the dealer plates?
Or the dealer plates, correct. So we're back to the dealer plate, Case 152.
And the town has determined that Carriati Truck and Equipment has six dealer plates?
I don't believe that's true, Mr. Chairman, it looks like we valued, we've estimated the value of that particular vehicle with a dealer plate on it. He may have six, he may have more than that, but we've only valued one vehicle based on the vehicle that we saw the plate on.
All right, because I'm reading right from the personal property record. Six plates on dealer plate list, 8,500 each. But you are declaring personal property of 37380 for the truck that that one dealer plate was on?
That's my estimate, I don't have that paperwork in front of me, so Rhonda came up with that value, but it's my guess that at least I recall instructing her to just value that particular vehicle.
Okay. Okay, do I hear a motion from the Board?
Well, can we hear this case on this one, do we have enough?
Um the appeal puts a market value of $1,500 by the appellant. I can't really read, we use our plates for repair. Two vehicles per year, sold? I can't, I can't even read the we shuffle our body installation customer vehicles to and from?
Tom, I have, I have a motion, actually.
Okay.
I have a motion. I make a motion to reduce the market value to $30,000.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, now, 2020-150. This is the list of trucks. So this is where your spreadsheet is, correct, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, I think we're showing 37,000 for the the value that we want versus the 56,000, which you have assessed at?
Okay, let me find the list, because it does make it
You see it?
I'm getting there. There's a lot of a lot of paper, or a lot of screens. I missed it somewhere. Let me start at the top again. Anybody else seen this spreadsheet within all these?
Yeah, I'm looking myself, Tom.
Yeah, because it for each appeal, it shows the prior value, which will make our decision and voting easy to go through here. I would assume it's loaded in the, toward the end of all the appeals.
Could ask the Recording Secretary if she knows where it is.
I know it's in here, because I looked at it earlier.
I think it's before the photos, maybe page 21, 23?
Before the photos? Oh, okay.
Page 23, Tom.
Okay, yep. I was looking after the, all the photos, so, okay. All right, so let's, let's work right off of that, all right? And we're going to start with 2020-150. And we're going to make a motion to change it to and this is what now, the assessed value, correct? Mr. Jackson, these are all assessed numbers?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Correct?
All assessed, all assessed values, that's correct.
Okay. So appeal value, assessed value, but we're going to change it to the new appeal value or to the 2018 value?
Excuse me, I'm going back and forth, I shut my microphone off. So it should, it should correspond to whatever the previous grand list year value was?
Exactly, that's, that's the value we're proposing, the previous grand list value.
And that is the 2018 value on your spreadsheet, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, all right. Because you have a little bit different, you are a little bit different, but, but so let's go to the 2018 value, do I hear a motion on 2020-150?
Make a motion to, on 2020-150, to go back to the 2018 value of $3,950 assessment?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
This is 2020-149?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to reduce the value to $3,690 on 2020-149, and that is an assessment value?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one will be 2020-148?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to reduce the assessment value to $3,690 for 2020-148?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is 2020-147?
Make a motion to reduce the assessment value to $3,690 to 2020-147?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing Number 2020-146?
Make a motion to reduce the assessment value to $1,760 for Hearing Number 2020-146?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next hearing is 2020-145?
Make a motion to reduce the assessment value to $2,720 for Hearing Number 2020-145?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next hearing is 2020-144?
Make a motion to reduce the assessment value to $3,520 for Hearing Number 2020-144?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing Number 2020-143?
Make a motion to reduce the assessment value to $2,720 for Hearing Number 2020-143?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing Number 2020-142?
Make a motion to reduce the assessment value to $2,860 for Hearing Number 2020-142?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Hearing Number 2020-141?
Make a motion to reduce the assessment value to $2,860 for Hearing Number 2020-141?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2020-140?
Make a motion to reduce the assessment value to $2,860 for Hearing Number 2020-140?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Last one, 2020-139?
Make a motion to reduce the assessment value $1,850 for Hearing Number 2020-139?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson, I think that concludes all the appeals.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Appreciate it very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Shelby. Mr. Coombs, Mr. Avery, Carl?
Yep, you'll receive a notice in the mail.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you, good night now, thank you very much.
Shelley, I missed Hearing Number 146. I missed the assessed value, do you happen to have that in front of you?
No, no, I don't, we'll have to go over it tomorrow, because this thing is confusing, so we're going to have to straighten it out and make sure we get we'll help this
146.
1760.
1760, thank you. I'll see if I'll see if I can get our next appellant on the line.
Okay. And is that Mr. Dean Atali or? Is that who you look?
Correct, I'm going to try to get the Dean Atali on the line.
Okay. Does anybody remember what? What page those emails were or? 2020-100, the memo?
121, I believe.
121. You're correct, thank you. Okay. So we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. 7, 8, okay.
Mr. Chairman, so I've called everyone, left a couple of messages. We just have to stand by, I guess, until someone calls in. Unless you want to call for, okay, unless you want to call for a break or something.
Yeah, why don't we break for? Let's see, 6:45, about 10 minutes.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm not sure if I should be here this early or not.
You're fine, you're you're doing, you're doing okay. Let me just see if everybody's here. Yeah, oh, yeah, no, no, stay right there.
Okay.
Mr. Jackson, are you back? We took we took a 10-minute break, so.
Okay, yeah, he told me he might be running ahead of schedule, so I'll stay.
You're fine, wait, wait two or three minutes and everybody should be back and we'll.
Okay.
We'll get right to it, thank you.
Still on. Yeah, no, they're waiting for me.
Okay, I'm back, Tom, Shelby, okay. Kevin, are you there also?
Yep, back, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I assume Shelley's there also.
Hi, Mr. Dean Atali.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to go to. 20, hearing number 2020-100. Okay, Mr. Dean Atali, I'm going to swear you in and you'll they'll be sworn in for each of the applications. I hear myself, I swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're going to start with 2020-100. And. We have. Mr. Jackson's email. To you and your responding email for. This property and the remaining seven properties.
Yep.
And I'd like to thank you for working diligently with the town and also for the town, you know, working with you. To come to a mutual agreement on this. So 26 Fair Street. Shelby, do you want, would you like to stay with market values? Shelley, is that?
Market value would be good, yes.
Okay. So 26 Fair Street. An agreement has been reached to place a market value of $894,100, $894,100. Right here, a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to reduce the market value to 26 Fair Street to $894,100.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So. I assume the next one, okay. We just, let me just go by the list here, 100. 098. Okay, so the next hearing is 2020-098, Unit Ali Realty LLC, 816 East Center Street. The town and Mr. Dean Atali have agreed to a market value of $724,400. Is that correct, Mr. Dean Atali?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion, please?
Make a motion for hearing number 2020-098 to reduce the market value to $724,400. Just note that that's a no change, if you would, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And no change on 2020-098.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, all the other ones will be a change, that's the only one that that there was no change. Okay. 2020-097. Dean Atali Realty, 350 Center Street.
Make a motion.
Yeah, the town and Mr. Dean Atali have agreed to a market value of $809,300. Is that correct, Mr. Dean Atali?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, for hearing number 2020-097 to reduce the market value to $809,300.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't, I'm not necessarily, had they've all been reduced, Mr. Jackson, or changed too? They've all been reduced too?
They've all been reduced except for the one that you just voted on prior to, yeah. 816 Center was was a no change, everything else is a reduction.
A reduction, no, okay. Okay, the next one will be 2020-093. Sand Ridge LLC. 226 North Plains. The town and Mr. Dean Atali have mutually agreed to a market value of $894,000. Correct, Mr. Dean Atali?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion for hearing number 2020-093 to reduce the market value to $890,400.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next hearing will be 2020-095. MD 1068 Account LLC. 1068 North Farms Building 1. The town and Mr. Dean Atali have mutually agreed to a market value of $968,000. Is that correct, Mr. Dean Atali?
Yes, sir.
Hey, are you a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to reduce on hearing number 2020-095, reduce the market value to $968,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, hearing number 2020-096, MD 1068 Account LLC. 1068 North Farms Road, Building Number 2. The town and Mr. Dean Atali have mutually agreed to a market value of $936,600. Is that correct, Mr. Dean Atali?
Yes.
Make a motion for 2020-096 to reduce the market value to $936,600.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the next one will be 2020-094. North Plains Realty LLC, 89 North Plains Industrial Road. The town and Mr. Dean Atali have mutually priced a value of $3,098,500. Is that correct, Mr. Dean Atali?
Yes, sir.
Hey, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion on 89 North Plains Industrial Road to reduce the market value to $3,098,500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next one and the last one will be 2020-099, Ives Road LLC. 20, Ives Road. Town and Mr. Dean Atali have agreed to a market value of $2,861,200. Is that correct, Mr. Dean Atali?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion for hearing number 2020-099 to reduce the market value to $2,861,200.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for working with the town, thank you, Mr. Jackson, for working with Mr. Dean Atali. You'll be getting updated paperwork from the assessor's office.
Great, have a great night, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.
So, we have an hour, or less?
So, I've called the other appellants, asked them to call in, I'll try to do that again and...
Okay, well... Somebody should call early, I'm sure.
Spoke to one party that said at the Circle Drive, I forget the name, said he can call in, you know, by 7:15, he thought.
Okay. Yeah, so we have Mr. Purno with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me find your case. Okay, we're all here, ready to go again? This is hearing 2020-138. James Purno, 18 Patrick's Court. I'm gonna swear you in, Mr. Purno. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief. Please go ahead and tell us about your appeal.
So, I purchased the house in 2019, mid-2019, July 2019, for $425. Similar house went at the end of 2019, up the hill, 5 Patrick's Court, for $427. And additionally, I had an assessment done when I purchased the house, and it came in at $428 or thereabouts. And it came in at $465, is what you guys were saying the house is worth. Unfortunately, I wish it was worth that much, but it's not. And I'm looking for you guys to adjust it down to the sale price for 2019, understanding that there could be some variance, but certainly not over 10%.
Hey, see what we have. Okay, so... Based upon your appeal and the town looking at the property... The town has changed the quality of the finished basement and factor land and building for proximity to I-91 for a new market value of $431,000.
Sounds fair.
Okay. You're good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to reduce the market value to $431,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go get paperwork from the assessor's office reflecting that change.
Yes, sir, thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you. Caller one, please identify, oh, go ahead, yourself.
Caller one?
Okay, we have no idea who's caller one.
That's you.
That's you.
Okay. We were asked to call in, 265 Cook Hill Road.
What is your name?
Anna and William McBriarty.
Hearing 137. This is hearing number 2020-137.
Yes.
Okay, William and Anna McBriarty. I'm gonna swear both of you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I do.
Okay, and you place the market value of $230,000 on the property? Please tell us about your appeal.
Well, because of the condition of the property. You received photos?
We did.
Okay. Well, my front porch has a seven-inch pitch and eight feet. Because it's over 100 years old and needs to be replaced. My back porch, the boards were rotted and covered with plywood 18 years ago, and that's giving away, so it has another coat on the center. My garage doors are masonite and swollen and have been glued back together, and they're shot. My driveway is basically cracked up in equivalent to a gravel about this point, because the snow blower picks it up.
Basement hatchway doors are...
My basement hatchway doors are in the condition that you have a picture of, they're basically rotted.
We've been trying to hire people for the past two years, and we were close to getting to hiring people to do the work for us, and then COVID hit, so we're stuck right now. The assessors also were comparing our house to houses that were newly built in the same year as our addition. So, it wasn't a comparable value.
I don't see that in here, I don't see...
That's what Jim told us when we went for the first appeal. He said that the prices of the properties he was comparing our property to were the ones that were built on or about 1992 and 1993, and that's when we put the addition on the house.
Okay, so prior to this revale, your market value that the town placed on the house was $280,000. Were you aware of that?
Not on any records that we were given.
Well, well, that's... That's what the prior assessed value, so the prior assessed value was $196,300.
Correct.
That equated to a market price of 280. Now, the town has a market value on it of 293, so... So, in prior, you know, the prior value...
The market value on the paperwork that we picked up from the assessor's office in the last assessment was $230,000, and that's why I put that on there, because I feel like it, if anything, it hasn't increased. It probably, with the current market, has stayed about the same.
I don't, you know, again, I'm reading right from the town, you know, field card. That the assessed value in 2018, 2019 was $196,300.
Correct.
It was increased to $205,200. That's the amount of... That's the amount of dollars that you pay taxes on. But that is only 70% of the market value. So, the market value from 280, 428, to 293, 1900. So, as for an increase, you know, that's within the range that the majority of homes, the last revale went up, so...
But with the existing problems of my house, how could it go up with the issues I have?
The majority of the reason why the houses went up in $300 is because real estate has gone up in the last last year.
Yeah, but the real estate has gone up, but last time my house was reevaluated, I, my porches weren't in this kind of shape, and to do these would be, the prices are unbelievable, so that's why I can't do them. And now, they say my house is worth more money.
Mr. Chairman?
See the logic in that.
Mr. President?
Yes. I'm just looking at the field card, and Mr. McBriarty, if you're correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like we were not able to take a close look at the property. We visited the property on May 13th of 2020. But so, we weren't, and this indicates that we were not able to get a close look at the property, so in other words, we had to view from the street, so they made...
Most likely, that individual came without identification, so I turned them away. We were supposed to get a notice before they were gonna be in the area, we did not. And when someone comes to my house and they have no identification, I turn them away and tell them I will call 911 if they can't produce identification of who they are and what the purpose is. And that was the problem.
Okay, each one of the data collectors is supposed to carry identification and...
I agree, but they did not. It was a younger person that could not produce any ID.
Okay. I would be more than glad to make an appointment with somebody because second shift and took a day off to talk to you at this point and arranged to meet somebody here.
To really, we're not arguing about the value going up. If we could have made the repairs over the last two years, then I would not have, there would be no argument about the value going up. But because we have not, and quite frankly, nobody could even get a mortgage if we tried to put this house in the market because of the repairs, unless it was gonna be a... Oh, I forgot what they call the mortgages, where where you have to do construction and show that the repairs are made. Where we're like ready to put caution tape on the porches to not have somebody walk on them for the fear of either falling through the back porch or literally having the front porch fall off the house.
Okay, I mean, this is why, you know, getting a closer look helps where we are at this point to make adjustments. So, I mean, we're only operating on what we think we know in...
Right, well, we try to look presentable, because we don't want the neighbors to complain about any blight. So, we try to keep everything looking decent, but even when the mailman comes and they try to come up the front porch, we tell him not to.
Okay, I, I think the board understands from your appeal, the situation. Do I hear any motion by the board?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to reduce the market value to $286,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, you'll be getting an update, updated paperwork from the assessor's office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Stacy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me find your appeal, I'll swear you in. Okay, this is appeal number 2020-058. Robert and Stephanie Stacy, I will swear you in. I saw, I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
Am I supposed to repeat that? I'm sorry.
No, you're just supposed to
Yeah, I do.
Agree with that, you're not...
Yes, sir.
So, this is 57 Circle Drive. You place the market value of $214,000 on the property. Please explain your appeal to the board.
Okay, um, we when we purchased this house back in, I think, January of 2019, and upon moving in, their issues were everywhere. I mean, it basically, they got it, whoever, because it was bank-owned, it was, they painted it, put a Pergo, not even Pergo, like laminate, not laminate, but microboard down in the kitchen in the hallway and called it a day. Nothing was replaced, they did do the roof, apparently, and they put a new furnace in. I was... If I did put 214 on there, I would probably say that was an error, because we feel like it was, we got the reassessment back in February, or not the reassessment, the re, the initial assessment back in February of 2020. And we didn't notice it in the mail, because we were at the hospital, because my son was being born. And by the time we got home and kind of like calmed down and dealt with his jaundice and everything, we looked at it and we we missed the right to appeal window. So, in October, because dealing with the new baby, we didn't really realize it. Back in October, when we got our mortgage and it went up like 120 bucks plus a month, we called the town, we talked to Ian, and there, obviously, there's nothing we could do about the initial assessment. But we got a reassessment, the revale, and it went up another $16,000 or whatever it is. So, we were able to fight that. So, that's why I'm arguing that the initial Um, so that's why I'm, I'm arguing that the initial uh, assessment was incorrect, then they added on to the revow type of thing. Um, there's issues all over the house. I sent you guys, uh, a PowerPoint with a bunch of pictures on it. Did you guys receive that?
Correct, yes, we did.
Okay, um, so starting with the issues, um, when we finally came into the house, there was a gas leak, so we had to replace, uh, the gas line in the house, um, going to the stove. So, and then, uh, there was a water leak in the kitchen with the plumbing, so we had to fix that. Uh, the, uh, skylight in the bathroom, um, leaks. And we didn't find that out until, uh, I think it was one of the tropical storms that came through that year. And then, uh, uh, we have two windows that are popped, so they didn't replace any of the windows. Uh, one of them is still popped in the front of the house. Uh, it's fogged glass, the slider door wa- is, uh, popped, well, I actually replaced the slider door that was popped. Um, the shed, even though it's back there, it's not built on concrete or anything. It's, uh, just on the ground, so the floor is rotting out, so I would say within the next like year or two, that's going to have to come down. Uh, the siding wasn't replaced or anything, it's all dented and pulled away from the house on the corners. The driveway is, um, needs to be totally taken out and redone. Uh, the, the electrical in the house was all, uh, the wires are all old. The plugs I've replaced, and in doing so, I've noticed that, uh, in some of the outlets, they used underground wire that doesn't have a ground, that they just split the wire, and I took pictures of that as well. And that was in the kitchen. Um, the fireplace in the living room, um, it just has a flue that was left open. The insides were, are rotted out, so I just capped it until I can get that replaced. Um, the, they did, the one, um, permit that they did take out with the town when they did the renovations was just to put in a new HVAC system, uh, air conditioner and, um, furnace. Uh, that was the only one that was taken out when they did the renovations. And, um, getting back to my phone call with Ian back in October, excuse me, um, he said that in looking at the pictures online, and when he stepped into the house for me to sign the paper in January, he said that, um, it was totally ren- like a totally gutted, and that was what he was basing his initial assessment off of. And during our phone call, um, or when I saw him last week at the town, I talked to him about it, and he's basically lost that back after looking at all the pictures. He was just like, well, you could see why I thought that, you know? So that's basically what we're going off of. Um, is, uh, is there anything else you want me to say? I mean, looking at the property values in the area, um, the house right across the street is like just two hundred square feet less than ours, and their value, or her value at seventy-four, um, Circle Drive, is still at two fifteen, uh, two fifteen-six, let's call it. And, uh, you know, her tax, uh, value is at one eighteen-seven. Uh, around the corner at nineteen, their house is basically the same size as ours. Uh, their value on the house is two twenty-four-three, let's call it. Two, four bedrooms, two baths, their value, their tax assessment is at, uh, one twenty-two-three. Um, so those are two houses in the area. When we purchased this house, they actually had to like go outside of ten miles to find comparable, comparable homes to even look at. Because, uh, this neighborhood is kind of all like with the single floor, one level ranch, no basements, no garages on some of the houses. It was, it's just difficult for them to find. So those are two on my block that are on my neigh- in my neighborhood that I saw. Uh, I mean, I have a list, and I think I included that list on the PowerPoint. So. And right now, you guys, um, well, the reassessment value came up to one sixty-six-nine when I fought that assessment. They agreed and they just dropped it down to one fifty-nine-eight for the assessment value. And, you know, from when we purchased the house, it was at, uh, it was at, um, one twenty, so it's gone up like forty, almost, was it one twenty-two? So it's gone up like thirty-five thousand dollars for a coat of paint and a new furnace and a new roof. That seems high to me. I'm not, and I understand that the market is skyrocketing right now because every, because of COVID, everyone wants to get out of apartments, everyone's leaving New York. I understand that aspect of it. And, you know, I'm just not convinced that the condition of the house is warranted of, uh, even a one fifty-nine-eight.
Yeah, so it was reduced, uh, during the informal appeal process from two thirty-eight-four to two twenty-eight-three.
Right.
That's, that's the market value, correct?
Uh, that's what they're saying, the market value. I kind of went around and, uh, searched the internet, and the market value was anywhere between two thirty-five and two seventy-eight for the neighborhood. And I understand, looking at the houses that were recently sold in my neighborhood, there's, they're a lot smaller and they went for a lot more. Um, but those, both of those houses were like completely gutted, and, and I watched that process play out, so. Uh, I don't, I didn't pull the, uh, those houses to see what permits or anything that they went with, but, um, I watched the transition from my window.
Okay. Um. So I think the board is, uh, look through their appeal, your pictures, your PowerPoint, the town's record, uh, um, your testimony. Okay, um, let me, uh, ask the board members if they have, uh, any motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion, uh, on fifty-seven Circle Drive to reduce the market value to two hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, looks like, you know, that's what you paid, and I think that's what we'll, you know.
No, I, I totally agree, that's fair, and I appreciate everyone's time. Uh, I hope you guys stay safe and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one, bye.
Okay, Michael Schoff is on the line if you're interested in talking to me, sir. It's, it's earlier than I was told, but I was given a message that I could call in.
Mr. Schoff, hold on, we'll, we'll, uh, get right to it.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, the next hearing will be twenty twenty oh thirty-three. Michael Schoff.
Yes.
Ten twelve Clintonville Road, I'm going to swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief. Uh, you have placed the market value on the property of two hundred thousand dollars, see the attached explanation. Uh, please, uh, tell us about your appeal.
Okay, I'll ask the board's indulgence to let, let me state the history of this property and what has happened here, sir. Uh, it'll take a couple of minutes, but I will try to make the board understand what is going on. Uh, I bought this run at the time, a former rundown farm for property for my son many years ago for his family residence. I am a university-educated engineer. I bought this property under the name of Michael Schoff Incorporated, the name of my estate-to-be. I enclosed a copy of this from the Secretary of State. There is no corporation listed under that name. It's not a development company. This property was originally owned by a Wallingford Pool Builder who tried to divide it for development but could not because of no road access. My wife, my two sons, and myself demolished the defective in-ground swimming pool that I'd had, and I designed, redesigned the house structure such that the original farmhouse structure remained and the design became more up-to-date. I let my son and his family stay at this fifty percent finished house and told him to finish it on his own time in exchange for using it and, and owning it. My son worked for me and managed my business, a restaurant, La Mirage in North Haven. And his family ate at my restaurant daily since there was no kitchen in the house. This house only has the original sixty amp electrical service. I installed a new two hundred amp underground electrical service from the railroad up to the transformer pad next to the house. The Wallingford Electric Company installed a transformer and pulled a new service wire to the transformer. I hired two licensed electricians from Nutmeg Electric, their high-voltage contractors, to terminate the wires. Incidentally, Nutmeg Electric did a significant part of the terminations in the Wallingford Power Plant. When the electrical inspector, Mr. Chuck, Chuck Genovese, found out that I had not used his electrical contractor to terminate the wires, he told my son he would never approve the service. My son got into a heated argument with him, and he told him that he would never approve the electrical service and there would no electrical service be brought to the house. The Wallingford Electrical Inspector next ordered the Wallingford Electric Company to reclaim the transformer from the property such that no service could be brought to the property. Next, during the drought, the well started to fail, the submersible pump was no longer covered with water and ran twenty-four hours a day and overheated and got damaged. My daughter-in-law took advantage of this and talked to my son into moving to Maine where she grew up and convinced my son that he, he no longer had to work weekends. Now I have a structure that is about sixty-five percent finished and thirty-five percent that is not done. The thirty-five percent that's not done is the kitchen, the pantry, the guest bedroom, the home office. There is no plumbing, electrical, or heat in any of these rooms, only framing and studs. There is no proper electrical service to the structure and now has no water service either. There is no landscaping, and the big thing, no certificate of occupancy, so it cannot be rented to anyone as a residence. Since this property can only be used for storage, it must be classified as a garage and not classified as a residence. Since it cannot be used as a residence to be listed as storage instead of residence, which would be significantly reduced value and assessment. I hope to restart this stalled project this year and finish it since the town now has a new honest electrical inspector. Then I will welcome the assessor to put a fair market value on this house when it is finished and ready for occupancy. I am not in the construction business. I only work on my own or family properties. I taught my sons all the construction trades that I learned from skilled tradespeople while I worked for General Electric, supervising their multimillion-dollar construction projects for General Electric Engineering for fifteen years. Some cons- excuse me, I own some construction equipment but only use it on my own property, not as a business for money corporation. The land that this house is on is not developable. It is landlocked by other owner properties on three sides and blocked by railroad on the fourth side. The only entrance to this property is over a railroad tracks over an unprotected crossing which eliminates it from being developed. The reevaluation contractor for Wallingford agreed with my statements, and what he did was reduce the assessment that he had put on it from three hundred and fifty-five-eight to three forty-one-eight. I believe it should be reduced an additional fifty thousand dollars at two ninety-one-eight. That's my story, sir, and I'm glad to answer any questions. And, uh, I know it sounds strange, you know, but building inspectors are not always honest. Always looking for something. And I, the, the one in North Haven, the electrical inspe- excuse me, the building inspector in North Haven, everybody thought he was great too until, uh, one of the, uh, air conditioning contractors recorded him that he was looking for a free air conditioning in his house to approve. Somebody who worked at an air conditioning contractor, they, they fired him about a week later.
Okay, I, I mean.
I know it sounds kind of sa- I know it sounds, you know, that this is the history of the property and all of this can be verified.
Correct, and, and I think, uh, some of the same issues were, were spoken when we heard your last appeal within the last revow cycle. Um, so nothing's, nothing's really changed or, or moved.
Wait, when was this, sir? What, when was this, sir?
Well, you, you were here with this property in the two thousand fifteen, uh, revow cycle, so.
Yes, yes, okay, I just wanted, I had a, I had a personal property thing with you.
No, I, I, I re- I remembered, uh, your appeal on this property before. So, a- again, it's all about property values of ten-one, twenty-twenty. Um, you know, this size house with seventeen acres in Wallingford, um.
But my son was, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you, sir. My son was there at the time and it was a residence. Now, he's gone and I can't rent it to anyone.
Well, I, I, I. It's not about renting it, it's about what's, what the value is and would someone buy it, okay? And again, a thirty-three thou- uh, thirty-three hundred square foot house on seventeen acres in Wallingford, um, I don't think there'd be a problem selling the property. So in, in five oh eight, three hundred, you know, um, uh, so he's got five oh eight-three, as a result of informal appeals process, the building was factored to reflect sixty-six percent complete, reducing the market value from five oh eight to four eighty-eight. So I think five oh eight-three, if the house was finished on seventeen acres, uh, is still, uh, a, a good deal, so.
But, sir, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you, sir. But the big thing is, it can't, I, you're saying, sell it. You're not saying, I can use it. I can't use it without a certificate of occupancy. I have to finish it correctly, sir, and that's what the big thing is, I can't rent it to anyone. So that devaluates it tremendously, sir.
Well, we're looking at what the value of the house is if it was completed. Not about renting it, it's about what the value is. Theoretically, somebody would come along and pay you for that house. I'm not selling, telling you to sell it, I'm just telling you on the open real estate market that, uh.
But that's the total, sir, the property and the house that you're telling me, sir.
Yes, that's what we're talking about. It's all, it, the, the seventeen acres is, is the property that the house is on, correct?
Yes, yes, but I'm, you're, you're, you're factoring the property and the house into that value. The house doesn't have that kind of value, sir.
Well, the assessor's office, vision, everybody, I mean, that's their job. They know how to value a piece of property, whether the house is finished or not. That's why they're reflecting a sixty-six percent complete. You even said sixty-five percent complete, so.
But that's the truth, that's the truth, I, I'm not lying.
Yeah, so they've placed the current market value of four eighty-eight, two hundred on the property, all right, at sixty-five se- percent complete. I, I am totally in agreement with that, um, with seventeen acres and a thirty-three hundred square foot house. In, in today's.
You're, 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 you're saying that seventeen acres has that much value to the property, that it's not developable, sir.
Well, maybe somebody doesn't want to develop it. Maybe somebody just wants seventeen acres of property and a nice house. They're, you know, that, that's a target market for somebody in Wallingford like that, so. I, I think that, I think, you know, the board has heard, we, we see the, um, the, uh, recommendations from the assessor's office. We see, you know, the information back from the informal appeal process, and, uh, uh, I think the board can vote on what we have here. process, and uh, uh, I think the board can vote on what we have here.
Okay, now you're saying that you're gonna override what you're, the previous uh, appeals contractor said? He reduced it to three forty-one eight?
That's the assessed value, I'm talking about the, the market value, correct, the assessed value will be three forty-one eight. The current, which is a reduction from the twenty fifteen uh, revale number, so I'm going with, you know, I, I'm going with what the town is, is saying here, um, four eighty-eight two hundred is the current market value, the current assessed value is three forty-one eight. Okay, that's what the, the uh, Vision people that you sat with or talked with, uh, and the assessor's office determined, I, and I'm in agreement with that. The, and do I hear something from the board?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, on hearing num- uh, hearing number twenty twenty dash zero three three, no change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, you'll be notified uh, from the assessor's office with a letter. Okay, so we have um, Scott Cleary uh, as the last one.
I was just on the phone with Mr. Cleary, um, he's um, he's driving, but he's gonna pull over and call in, um, so, you know, he said, give him five minutes.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. And that's, that will be the last one, correct?
According to my records, yes.
Share. Hello?
Hello, Mr. Cleary, thank you for um, taking our call and, and, and uh, joining us early.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, so, this is hearing number uh, twenty twenty oh twenty-seven. Scott Cleary and uh, Avira Cleary, five lost Brook Lane, Wallingford, I'm gonna swear you in, I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I do.
Okay, so uh, tell us about your uh, uh, appeals application.
So I, I went through the process with Vision to do the phone um, appeal, and they told me that the assessment would be lowered to two seventy-four, um, which I, I didn't, I thought the assessment that they gave me was kind of in the ballpark, but I thought it was a touch high based on the condition the house was when I bought it, I bought it two years ago, um, and, and they had kind of agreed because they told me the square footage matched more of like the two seventy-four range rather than the two eighty-one range that it came in at. Um, I'm, I'm just kind of asking for that, um, you know, the, the house was in considerable, needed considerable work when I bought it just two years ago.
Um, so what work have you done to it?
Well, I put a new roof on, we, we put um, we refinished all the floors and um, the, and um, new paint, new everything, we put in a new walkway for um, you know, for aesthetic purposes, so we tried to, to keep up with, you know, the neighbors anyway.
You don't have anything that in writing, an email, or anything that, that-
No, it was, it was the phone assessment, so, you know, I'm only based on what the, the uh, Vision agent told me, and um, then when the assessment came back unchanged, I figured I would go through this process.
Kevin, anybody have any record of, of that, uh, with Vision saying that, or?
That would have been part of the informal hearing process, I believe.
Yeah, on the phone.
It was in December of uh, twenty twenty.
Yeah, it was the, the nineteenth or so of December?
Yes, exactly, yeah, so it must have been a phone appointment for an informal, okay.
Yep.
I do not have hearing pro- paperwork in front of me.
Yeah. So the house is, is, is fourteen hundred and seventy-three square feet, um, and that uh, there's a house on, on Summerwood that's kind of like in that same range that has a slightly lower assessment than mine.
So you, you've gone from an assessment of one ninety-one hundred to one ninety-six nine hundred, you've gone up sixty-eight hundred dollars in assessed value.
In assessments, yeah. And I was thinking that it would be more in the range of one ninety-one eight, one ninety-two, somewhere in that range, I mean, something, you know, in the middle would, would kind of be, I think, reasonable.
Again, the, and, and again, these prices are now uh, based on the, the October first twenty twenty grant list, and, and of course, you know, the real estate market is um, been uh, been very good.
Yeah, but you don't know if the, if that's a continuing factor or, you know, a, a bubble in, you know, just for the current time we're in, so I, I get that it's, you know, a long-term thing, so.
Okay, uh, based upon your appeal, what you said about Vision, um, you know, where you were, where, you know, where you started and where you, you wound up in all those factors, um, I think uh, the board may have um, some information in, in uh, understanding, and maybe the board would like to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion on hearing number twenty twenty dash zero two seven to reduce the market value to two hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Mr. Avery, you're muted.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Cleary, we'll uh, be sending you an updated paperwork.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Bye.
Thanks. I think that's the end of uh, all the hearings, um. I ju- I wanna ask a question while we're, we're still on the record here, um, for Monday's meeting. So, Mr. Mulready uh, needed to send back in some new, uh, some authorization letters and also some appeal uh, changes uh, with the Gavin properties were not identified correctly and who the owner, do, do we have those? You know?
I, I believe we do, um, well, you know, you, you're right, Gavin had so many different entities, Shelley, do you recall if putting that in the, in the package, those authorization letters?
I did put a lot of authorization letters in there, but I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, so I remember that there was an authorization letter that spelled out several different entities, so I believe on the Gavin stuff, I think he's okay, on the um, uh, Verna, which includes Gem Properties, I believe he's okay on that, and then um, there was one for Y and O, that one's-
The authorization, I mean, it, it's fine, but there were some actual appeals that were um, had the wrong owner name on them.
Mr. Chairman, I would do believe that I saw some from Mr. Mulready, I believe he emailed some, some of those things, and I did see that he changed.
He changed the appeals to the correct property LLCs, okay, I, I just wanted, you know, for Monday, that, that the paperwork is correct, that um, you know, we're not voting on stuff that doesn't match the town records, and uh, okay, if you've seen it, um, okay, so another question while we're still on here, anything from Mr. Lo, Lo Monte from last night?
Okay, so, all right, if I can, uh, Mr. Chairman, let me go back to Mulready, and let me finish up on that, 'cause I did call him and I, and I wanna speak to him tomorrow, so Kevin seems to think he did new appeal applications, I don't think I saw those, so is that what you're talking about, Kevin, new appeals? New appeal forms?
Appeals, yes, I believe they came in the next day.
Did they, what did they say, amended on them or something?
No, they weren't stamped as amended, his email indicated that he was submitting the forms with the correct owners.
Okay, 'cause my, my concern is, you know, the deadline date is February twentieth, now he's submitting it afterward, um, so that's something, I'm, I'll, I'll verify all of that tomorrow.
Okay, that was something that we heard, we heard is, you know, we heard the appeals that the appeal did not match the property.
Right.
Information.
Right, so, so just so I'm clear, what is the, what does the board want, they want a new appeal that says amended on it with the, with the current date, or?
I want a new, I want a new appeal with the correct LLC on it, with the correct property owner on it.
Okay, all right.
We're voting on property that doesn't belong to that LLC.
Right.
That was one of the tasks, you know, that, based upon listening to the appeals that he had to do, get the authorization and straighten out the, the um, the appeal ownership name.
I believe he did address that, so.
I recall that, okay, all right, okay, and, and then you wanna talk about Mr. Lo Monte?
Did we receive anything from him?
Yeah, we received some, a couple of pages for each property, I think Shelley could tell you better than I could, I looked at it, it didn't really, it was not an appraisal, it was, you know, it may have been a page out of an appraisal that he's working on, but they were not appraisals.
He was still not complete on the appraisals, he was far from it, and uh, that's, and he admitted that last night.
Yeah.
Not only that, the, you know, the market value on the peel, appeal is different than the market value he has talked about last night on uh, only, only two, four did not, you know, match up, two did. His, his appraisal and the owner's market value uh, only matched on two of them, so.
Correct, and I would also add-
Yeah.
I would also add to the board that an appraiser does not perform an income approach on a two or a three family property, it just, it just isn't done, it's just, you know, for a property like that, it's sales or cost approach, it's an older property, it's based, basically sales, you know, so nobody would do an income approach on a two, on a two-unit house, two, two-family home or three-unit home, it's, so.
Okay, but, but again, the, the information was not available at the board hearing, so please take that into consideration, you know, if that information comes to us, we can look at it, we can look at what he's told us last night, but there's a mismatch, there's, there's no information, there's late information, um, you know, there were informal hearings that people could have gone to, there were, you know, deadlines uh, three days before last night, you know, the information was supposed to be in, so take that into consideration when, when reviewing these for Monday night, that we um, when we vote, we uh, have accounted for all of those deficiencies.
And we'll make sure that the board gets an email uh, with any copies that he's sent into us, so you can at least look that over during, over the weekend.
That would be fine, so uh, the next meeting is scheduled for Monday night at six P M, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, um, I think we did good tonight, I uh, I appreciate uh, the work you did with Mr. Dean Atali, that was the way it should be, uh, and uh, that was very good, so.
Very smooth, very smooth.
Very smooth, correct, uh, that's, that's what you get when you work directly with the owner of property and, and the employees of the town, that's, that's a good relationship, um, I'm, I'm working out these differences. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Talk to you Monday night.
Good night.
Good night.